Good afternoon. I'd like to call this work session to order at 6:01. Welcome, everyone. Roll call.
Alex Cantú present.
Mary Edmundo's present.
Espocho present.
Nareda Cantú present.
Dr. Samora will join us shortly. I know he's here. Alda Benavides present. Dr. Science, I do declare a quorum.
Thank you. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. Dr. Science, do we have?
Yes, we have a public comment from Mr. Israel González.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here today because I actually spoke with a group of parents and I actually told them I would be here today. I wanted to talk to you all about safety. Meet the Teacher Night was a great event at my children's two schools. They attend two different campuses. They were both great events. But at both campuses, I noticed that parents had the same concern: safety. Recent events in the media, of course, have left many questions and many concerns. Safety is something that, of course, not to be taken lightly, and I understand that. And I've even heard that there's an increased police presence on these campuses, and that's great. I applaud that. However, many of the parents were aware of this, were made aware of this, and it didn't seem to be enough for them. And I can fully understand that because in these trainings, I mean, the last resort is at least to fight back. And maybe the older kids at high school could do that, but some of the younger students, they don't have that as an option. Now, I understand where these parents are coming from. Their concern is very valid. Now, even having police there. Look at what happened at Uvalde. We had over, close to 300 police officers, and they could not handle the problem. So that's something that sounds good, but it may not be a real solution. And all the parents are aware of this. Now, what I propose that the board consider is the school marshal program. Now, Texas allows this. It's up to the board to decide whether or not this will be permitted. We, it is said that this is a controversial program. I really don't see how because in speaking to the parents, in hearing their concerns, everybody there seemed that they would be at ease with a teacher carrying a weapon. And why wouldn't they? We trust teachers with so much already, and for good reason. They're the individuals that shape, help us shape and mold our students, our children and their future. The reason that they're trusted is because they're given proper training. Great. Now, let's train them to also be able to defend our kids. Their life is on the line. If they get to go home, so do our kids. Teachers form real, meaningful bonds with their students. And La Jolla, being from La Jolla, I know that's what it is because there's a feeling of somos familia. So I know that the teachers, no offense to the police officers, but I've had incidents where police officers from La Jolla have threatened my kids. I don't trust them. I trust a teacher that's properly trained. If a teacher, if you can get me a properly trained teacher, I would trust them. Thank you for your time. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is presentation and discussion of Texas Association of School Boards La Jolla ISD Staffing Review Report dated September 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Ms. Gloria Rodriguez, our executive director for student, oh, excuse me, for Human Resources, will lead our discussion.
Good afternoon, Dr. Science, Dr. Benavides, members of the board, assistant superintendents. It's my pleasure to present the information at today's work session. So I will be reviewing information that TASB provided our office in regards to this report. And you can find this report in section one of your binder. It is a very detailed report in regards to staffing. And we did partner up with Region One Educational Services through Project Rise to contract TASB to work on this report. So there's a little bit of history and background there in regards to the district and the methodology that was used in regards to the data collection. We did involve our directors at the time to provide information that TASB was needing through either data submission or conference calls with TASB. And we did turn over our data files as to what we had in our Human Resource Management System. And so they did collect benchmark data, and they provided us on page five a historical personnel report in regards to, also in referencing, our student enrollment. So again, this report was from 2020, 2021, and we could see the decline in the student enrollment. In '21, '22, at the end of the year, we were receiving information about 24,442 students. At the start of this year, the latest report is at 24,168. So we've still seen a significant decrease of approximately 2,000 students on there, yet our personnel has had limited changes on there. I will review that information with you. On page seven, it gives us information in regards to peer district comparisons. If you look at the districts that information was obtained, there is only one other district from the valley, which is PSJA. And so the other districts on there may not necessarily be from our region, but these were selected by TASB, not requested by our office on there. And so we can see the comparison districts on there that they used as data points with the information that they're going to provide to us. On page eight, there is exhibit number three. It shows a peer group comparison, and it's the staff at La Jolla ISD per 1,000 students on there. As we can see, the teachers are pretty much on par with the other school districts. Blue being La Jolla ISD, red being the state average, and green being the average of our peer districts. So we're just slightly above the state average in our teachers. The professional support staff, again, we're slightly above the state average and slightly above our peer districts. Campus administration, we can see that those are almost right on par. Central administration, we're tied there with the state average, but above our peer districts. Educational aides, this is where we are below the state average and below our peer districts. You can see with auxiliary staff, this is where we surpass the state average and our peer districts. And the total personnel, you can see that it surpasses both the state average and the average for our peer districts.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, ma'am.
The comparison districts, was it because these districts were participating in Project Rise? Or what was the reason for these districts?
It was data that TASB had collected also on their staffing reviews that they felt they could use in a comparison to La Jolla ISD.
Oh, so it had nothing to do that they were with a grant or anything?
Correct, correct.
I was just wondering because we always do the five surrounding districts, and it's only one.
Yes, ma'am.
And you mentioned that, but I wanted to know why.
Yes. We use those when we do the salary surveys since the job market would be in this area. But this is the teacher-to-student ratio.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next couple of pages is a summary of the findings that they provide, but there is a graph on, or an exhibit on page 11 for our curriculum and instruction department comparison that we are, at La Jolla ISD, 1.6 staff members per 1,000 students in our CNI department, and our average peers are at 2.2.
So then that means that with the changes that were done, we're even going to be lower?
We could actually be servicing, there would be a difference on there. We don't have the exact amount with the new student enrollment and how many staff members have been changed.
The study was done when we had 26,000.
27,000 to 76 students.
So there might be a slight difference, but.
No, I know, I know. But because of the fact that we were at 1.6 and now so many people were moved out, especially out of CNI, that.
It could be, yes.
That we would be a lot lower.
We could be lower than the 1.6 now.
Yes, correct. Under exhibit five on the next page for our business, business office and finance staff comparison, we were at 1.0 for the staff per 1,000 students, and our peer districts were at 0.7. So we're slightly above with our business and finance staff.
And we're going to be way above with the positions that we approved?
Yes, that is correct. The additional staff. In Human Resources, on exhibit six, this one, we are right on par with our peer districts at 0.3 staff members per 1,000 students. And again, this was with the enrollment of 27,000, so we might be slightly above on that one. Under page, on page 13, exhibit seven, for our operations comparison, we're at 0.8 staff members per 1,000 students. Our peer districts are at 0.5.
And these positions right here are either administrative or supervision positions?
Yes, that is correct.
Just to clarify that, for all of the departments?
For like CNI as well, all of them?
Yes. It's the administrative and/or supervision positions.
Correct. In a previous report that we had, I believe in 2019, that's where we had some of our auxiliary positions, and that's where information was included in our allocations so that way it could be in comparison with what TASB was giving us. On page 16, you can see our communication staff comparison. This one is right on par with our peer districts at 0.1 staff members per 1,000 students. And the next couple of pages, for page 15 through 61, these are different positions that TASB has given us options as to what we could consider in consolidating or decreasing staff due to the enrollment that we have. So if you all would like to turn to section two, each one of the options that TASB has given us, I have.
Section two of the binder?
Yes, section two of your binder.
What page? Okay.
Because this section is going to summarize what's in these next pages from page 15 to 61. So we're going to take it to the summary of these pages. And it starts in page what, Gloria?
Yes. So based on the data that TASB had collected in May of 2021, they presented different options to the district in regards to the staffing options. And so one of the options that they gave us under administrative and instructional support staff was to consider the absorption of five high school assistant principal positions. The current average is one assistant principal per 436 students. The benchmark is one per 450 students. And since I wanted to include updated information, we currently have 66 assistant principals throughout the district. And we have the breakdown there as to the high schools, how many assistant principals they have. Please keep in mind that as a district, we've made a decision to have Ford NGL directors and TSTEM directors that are also in the same category of the assistant principals, but we do call them directors on there. So that's where we're slightly higher. But we are still over on the staffing based on the 450 to 1 ratio that TASB recommends. All of our middle schools have two assistant principals with the exception of Science Middle School. They do have a third assistant principal. Last year, we had made the decision where some of the elementary campuses that were dropping in enrollment had half an assistant principal. We brought that back to you all for consideration to increase to one full AP. And so all of our elementaries have one assistant principal. So based on the formula that TASB has 450 students, I mean, 450 students per, I'm sorry, the 24,000 divided by 450 would be that we should have 54 assistant principals. We have 66 on there.
Are there any questions on this before we move to the other?
These are recommendations?
Correct. These are recommendations, staffing recommendations.
And if you'll notice on that option one, the statement is for us to consider the absorption of five high school assistant principals. What we did, though, is we put the formula, that benchmark, where they talk about that we should have one assistant principal for every 450 students. So that's where the number 54 is coming from.
And this formula is coming from where?
TASB.
TASB. It's a TASB benchmark.
I think we've said in the past, you know, that sometimes we got to consider, I mean, we understand and how they get their information, but we got to consider the need as well, the area. And I honestly feel like some of our schools work on skeleton crews sometimes. Look at the importance right now that we have on safety. And I mean, I don't see. And this is just, you know, my opinion. I don't see. How, cutting, what is it, 12? Is that what it is? 12 assistant principals?
Well, yeah. We're not making recommendations right now. We're just providing the TASB study.
Okay. No, that's why I asked. Are these recommendations?
This is a TASB alternate plan, but it is, at this time, it's not administration that's making these recommendations. We're presenting TASB study and what TASB would recommend that we could do if we wanted to reduce our staffing cost.
Correct. Because we have increased in APs. Like I said, the Ford NGL, the TSTEM, those are decisions the district has made to increase staffing at the high schools to oversee these programs. What is Lincoln? We have an additional administrator there, an associate principal for discipline. So those are decisions that we've made locally to be able to assist those campuses, including the additional assistant principal at Science Middle School.
And the information that we have and we're going to have on each of these slides is the current staff that we had is just so that you can get an idea of what is this TASB recommendation compared to what we look, what we have because we didn't want to give you a recommendation and you not have an idea of, well, how many, if they're recommending this or if they're recommending the absorption of five, well, how many do we have? So we want it for you to have a clear picture of what the recommendation looks like and the actual current staff that we have in each of these categories.
And they're just options for us to consider, and it's very good because eventually we will have to consider some options. So it's good that we look at where we are and what are some alternatives.
Correct. So on the next page, we do have, under administrative and instructional support, these are the counselors on there. One of the options that TASB gave us was to consider the absorption of 11 school counseling positions and other campus adjustments. The ratio is one counselor per 350 students. So we looked at the total students that we have right now, 350 students. We should have a total of 69 counselors. As you can see, our current staff is 71 counselors. We excluded the special ed counselor, the substance abuse counselor, and the gear up counselors because those are decisions the district has made in order to assist at the high schools and the middle schools. So as you can see here, we're almost right on par with the counselors. Questions on the counselors? This one, option three, was consider evaluating instructional support staffing level. So this one, the district employs 0.7 staff per 1,000 students compared to peer district average of 1.7. In speaking to TASB, some of the staffing considerations are instructional support, but at the campus level. We have coordinators, so that's where there's a difference in the FTEs because it's a district decision to have content area coordinators.
So here, that's what you're talking about? The content area coordinators?
Yes.
Yes, we have content area coordinators. But in the study, it mentions that districts in the state are moving to having instructional coaches at the campuses.
Based on the needs of the campus.
And they don't have them at the central office? Is that what they're saying?
Not the way. We have our coordinators that really are the ones that coach teachers. In the state, the trend is to move towards campus-based instructional coaches.
The next one, under the administrative and instructional support staff, is to consider an alternate library staffing model. So the model absorbs four librarians and 10 library aides. So the district employs 2.1 staff per 1,000 students compared to the peer district average of 1.5. So based on the TASB recommendation formula, we should have 36 staff members in our libraries. We currently have 47. We have 35 librarians, and we have 12 library clerks. So we have decreased in FTEs since May of 2021 to present, where we've had clerical position vacancies. We've reassigned some of the library clerks. Most of them have been getting an increase in pay because the position that they're being assigned to is a higher-paying position and more days as well. So we are taking care of the staff in that essence. But we still have one pending reassignment with the library clerks, and this is the area that we're working with right now.
So this is correct? This is up-to-date information?
Yes, ma'am.
On the alternate staffing model for libraries, according to the TASB model, is that only the comprehensive high schools would have a library clerk, and all other campuses would have either a librarian or a library clerk, where the smaller schools would only have a library clerk. But aside from the three comprehensive high schools, every other school would have one personnel, whether it's a librarian or a library clerk.
Correct.
Are we actually looking at it like with the reading Renaissance? I mean, because I know we do that a lot. So the numbers that you're giving us here, is it based on that?
It excludes the reading Renaissance coaches at the high school because these are just the librarians and the library clerks.
But wouldn't they be added? Because they're part of the library staff.
They are part of the library staff, but we call them Renaissance coaches, so they were not part of the model on there. So we wanted to.
But for our evaluation, we should add them there because they are still library staff. So that's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Edmundo's and Dr. Benavides.
Dr. Science, which are the small campuses that do not have a librarian?
No, they all have one right now. They all have a librarian. But the TASB model, and I'm not sure which page for, I think a couple of the schools that had 300 or less, they recommended a library clerk only. But currently, all of our schools have a librarian.
What time?
Yes.
If I'm just looking at, we have only 35. How many campuses do we have?
We have 30, 18 plus 22. 40 campuses.
That's why I was asking.
I'm not. Oh, because some of them, like Carter, excuse me, I misspoke there because we do have the schools that are in the same building, like Carter and College and Career Center that have one library in the building. So they have one librarian. And Academy of Health Science Professions and Salina STEM, Early College High School, they share one building. They have one library, so they have one librarian.
Yes, Western Hope, or the ones that we do not have a library.
Western Hope, yes.
So these 12 library clerks, are they stationed in one campus or are they moved around?
No, they're at their assigned campus right now. So we do have one at every single one of our comprehensive high schools. The other ones, I don't have exact information as to where they're at. We have not moved the library clerks unless if we're needing to fill clerical positions such as attendance clerks. Some of them are choosing to go into instructional assistant positions because it is higher pay for them. So we're taking that into consideration.
Well, I noticed that I was at two campuses last week, and I noticed that actually you couldn't even walk in there because they have all these devices in there. Plus, I don't know what else they had. There was a, I mean, most of it was full. So is that part of the librarians to actually take care of all those devices and pass them out?
Yes.
Yes, they issue, they check in and check out devices.
So since you're bringing that up, so when the device is coming to the district, do they get sent out and then they get, I guess, registered?
They're processed at warehouse, and then they go into the librarian's inventory. But they're processed at warehouse.
But when they're delivered on the campuses, that's when the librarian is the one that passes it out to the student, correct?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions on this one? The next option that TASB recommends under administration and instructional support is consider absorbing 26 clinical aides. We have three traditional high schools would keep the clinical aide. All of the other campuses would only have their RN or the LVN. So right now, we do have 29 RNs, six LVNs, and 35 nurse aides. Questions on this one? Under the clerical paraprofessional support, option one is to consider the absorption of up to 54 campus clerical positions. The benchmark is 5.5 clerical staff per 1,000 students at the secondary level. So we could potentially absorb 13 positions. And the benchmark is 4.5 clerical staff per 1,000 students at the elementary campuses. And at the elementary campuses, we would absorb 41 positions. So currently, we have 187 clerical positions. Secondary, we have 93. Elementary, we have 94. So based on the TASB formula, we should have 71 at the secondary campuses. And at the elementaries, we should have 50. So the recommendation would be 121 for a district of our size. So in clerical positions, we would be considered overstaffed by 66.
So by absorb, do you mean what?
Excuse me?
When you have the word absorb, that the positions would be absorbed?
The positions would be absorbed. We look at reassigning the individuals when there is a vacancy as opposed to advertising and hiring from the outside. So as resignations, retirements, promotions come into play, we match the skill set of our staff to see who would be a good fit in the position that is needed.
I'm surprised with this one because I always thought that the secondary schools had more clerical staff. And it shows that the elementary has more. That's surprising.
Yes.
Because I'm thinking like the bookkeeper and those kind of positions that are at the secondary level that elementary doesn't have. But it's interesting. But it's it's interesting.
So option two, under clerical paraprofessional support, consider the absorption of up to 59 non-campus clerical support. So the non-campus clerical support would be all of our clerks, secretary, specialists within all of the central office departments. The benchmark is three per 1,000 students. The district employed at the time 128 staff in the area, and the benchmark is 68.5. So currently, we have 121 clerical staff. As individuals have been resigning, retiring, or there's been promotions, we've looked at those and see which ones we are not filling based on the allocations that we approved and any additional information that is that comes to us. So we have had a decrease in seven clerical positions from May 2021 to present. So in this category, based on the the formula, we are overstaffed by 49 clerical.
And this is, is this up to date?
Yes, ma'am, that is to date. I got the report from our staff yesterday.
Okay.
Dr. Science?
Yes, sir.
Considering the different programs that the district has and the requirements for keeping information, clerical assistance, how do you see this report here? Because at times, when you're at the campuses, they'll tell you that they need help for PMS, for all of the different requirements, special education and others, and we just have a population of students that do need some some help, and therefore they have additional programs.
Many times throughout the study in different categories, TASB always does make the statement that these are recommendations based on peers, but that every district is different based on the population that they serve. And so the district should use this as a guideline and make decisions that best fit the needs of their students. So it's not a cut and dry formula that all districts should follow or could follow, but it's a guideline and and evaluate your kids' needs and staff according to that. And you'll see, especially it's not as apparent in our clerical maybe, but that statement is very true in a minute when we're going to get to our teaching staff. And we'll talk a little bit about that because the recommendations that TASB makes are just on a, for example, 22 to 1 ratio and not consider other programs that we as a district have put in place in our campuses. But you'll see that when we come to the teaching positions.
Thank you.
But this page that we were just referring to, this is non-campus.
Correct, these are non-campus.
But the one before was the one with the campus, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
And the non-campus would be what, ma'am?
Curriculum and instruction, human resources, operations, the business office.
So within central office, we would be overstaffed by 49?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the clarification.
So the next option under clerical paraprofessional support is consider the absorption of up to 25 educational aides. As you can see, we currently have 318 instructional assistants. We have 118 in general education, 200 in special education, and there's been a decrease in 39. But again, because of special consideration, we are increasing in pre-K instructional assistance because of the ratio that we need to stay at 11 to 1 with the little ones on there. So even though that that is the recommendation, we are showing that we're 23 understaffed, but we are advertising for our special education instructional assistant positions. So we'll be seeing those recommendations coming in.
So help me understand why it is, it says consider the absorption of 25 aides, and then it says we're understaffed by 23.
Correct. At the time, as you can see, that there was a decrease in 39 on there, so the absorption could have already happened on there. But as we've been identifying more students with special education services that are needed, and also the increase in the pre-K 3-4 program where we're needing to hire instructional assistants to keep the ratio at 11 to 1, we've been seeing an increase in that. So this is one of those special circumstances where we don't, we can't necessarily follow that formula. Any other questions?
Say that again, girl, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat what you just said?
Yes, so this is one of those special circumstances because as special ed reaches out to us that they're identifying more special ed students, we need to increase with teachers and instructional assistants to provide equitable services to our students. In the pre-K 3-4 program, we have to make a concerted effort and document that effort that we're trying to get our teacher to student ratio at 11 to 1. So we're adding instructional assistance so we could potentially have 22 to 2 and still keep to that 11 to 1 ratio. So we see an increase in instructional assistance, even though the it's not within the formula. And so this is one of those special circumstances that that this is would not be a good option for us to follow or good recommendation.
And this is for special ed or is it also for pre-K?
The special ed and the pre-K 3-4. As we're increasing in numbers with our pre-K 3-4, not only do we need to add a teacher, we need to add an instructional assistant.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next section is for our special education staff. It says, consider the absorption of three special education aides and other campus adjustments. Again, we have not made any changes in our instructional assistance within special education. As resignations have come in or retirements, we have filled those positions as quickly as the the administrators are able to interview, recommend, and we submit them to the board. So we have remained steady. At the 200, sometimes we're able to shift our staff based on where the the needs are, and that's how we work together with special education department. Under option two, they, to consider the addition of four assessment staff, either LSSPs or diagnosticians. The benchmark caseload is 80 to 85 students per assessment staff. At the time of this report, we were at 98.2 students per assessment staff, and we have not increased in the LSP or diagnosticians. We had three LSSPs throughout the district and 27 diagnosticians, and those numbers have remained steady.
I thought we added the two diagnosticians.
Excuse me?
I thought we added two diagnosticians.
We added two diagnosticians last year.
We added the diagnosticians in the reading dyslexia.
Yes.
Yes.
But now they're diagnosticians in the special ed department.
Option three for the special education staff is to consider addition of 12 speech pathology staff. When we looked at the report and the data that we had from 2021, this was an error in the staffing report from TASB. We did actually have 10 speech pathologists on there. It was not three as the way that they were reporting on the report for us. So the benchmark caseload on this is 45 to 50 students per assessment staff. The benchmark that we had was 93.4 students per assessment staff. But again, that was an error because they were not identifying all of our, all of our speech pathologists on there. Currently, we have 10 speech language pathologists, two therapists, and 15 speech therapy assistants. We do have one vacancy for the speech language pathologist that we are advertising for.
I know at one time we had looked at not hiring as many speech therapy assistants because they can only do certain things and they need supervision from the pathologist.
Yes.
And I noticed that our numbers increased for the speech therapy assistants. So that's something to keep in mind because it limits what they can do compared to the pathologist.
So do we have contracted services for these areas?
First, for, I don't know if you can respond, Mr. Munoz, but I know that last year, we did not consult for speech therapy, for speech therapist, pathologist, or speech therapy.
We worked really hard last year, Dr. Somora, to reduce the the contracted services because there was a lot of contracted services. And there wasn't a a balance of the assignments. And so we really worked on that. I mean, they worked on it, but we recommend that they work on it as a department.
So have any concerns reached your office regarding maybe students that may be needing services and we don't have staff to provide those services?
No, not, I mean, not to human resources.
I I have not, I have not heard that concern. I have not heard that, no, that concern.
No, in special education.
Yes, overall.
Yes, special education.
I have not had that concern. I don't know, Mr. Munoz has something to add to that.
Good afternoon, everyone. To answer your question, Dr. Somora, I know the option is always there to contract or consult in the event that our staff are not able to provide those services. At the moment, I think we are trying to do as much as possible in-house. And so we haven't had to go out and get contracted services for those.
Okay, and the second part to the question was, do we have any concerns reaching you about students that may be needing special education services and that we are not staffed to do it?
Not at this point. I think that our special director hasn't brought up any concerns regarding us not being able to provide the services that our students currently need. But again, if that was to be the case, we always, we will do whatever it takes to provide those services. And if we don't have it in-house, we will go outside and get those contracted services.
Okay, thank you.
I know that we hired two additional speech pathologists, so are those added here or is this from last year?
This is the current staff that we have on there. So I looked at our FTEs that we had in May of 2021, and they were exactly the same as to what we currently have with the exception of that vacancy. So it, I don't, I don't see a difference from 2021 to yesterday's data.
Can you double check it?
Yes.
Yes, because I know we hired two, I know there's that vacancy, but I know that we that we added. And with this vacancy, it's going to be two. So that's why I was wondering if that number was accurate.
Any other questions for our special education staff? The next section is for teachers. Consider the absorption of up to 162 elementary classroom teacher positions. This is calculated at a 21 to 1 ratio for pre-K through grade four and 25 to 1 at grade five. I made the notation on this report from TASB that for the pre-K 3-4 program, we do need to look at making the effort to reach 11 to 1 on there. So based on that information, the current staff that we have are 752 elementary teachers. That is for our English, our dual program, our reading specialists, our elective teachers at the elementary. And so of these 752, 591 are in the pre-K 3 to 5 English or dual classrooms. Of these 591, 78 are in the pre-K 3-4 program throughout the district. 422 are in kinder through fourth, and 91 teachers are in servicing our fifth grade students. When we look at the formula that they give us, it shows that we are overstaffed with elementary teachers. However, because we do provide services for through dual, sometimes our our student to staff ratio are lower at some campuses because we have to offer the services in both English and Spanish. So we see lower student to staff ratios in some campuses. In others, we're like right on target at the 22 to 1. At some campuses, we're slightly over, and and so we we make the adjustments as needed. So the past week and a half, our our staff has been looking at those enrollment counts on a daily basis and making decisions to make adjustments where we need to do.
One of the other, and this is one of those categories where it depends on the district's programs because this ratios are just based on student counts and the 22 to 1. But we have made some staffing decisions at our elementaries. For example, we have a music teacher, we have a GT teacher, we have reading teachers, we have a PE coach. And so when you consider those positions at each elementary, that accounts for some of the overages because TASB just figures on student count and 20, dividing by 22 to 1. But when you consider that we have made these decisions to offer music and reading services and even the PE coach, the GT teacher, that adds when you think of just those five positions times 22 campuses, that's 110 positions that the district has made a choice to offer these positions. So sometimes it's misleading to say, oh, we're over 162 elementary teachers. Well, we also have to consider the programs. And I was looking for an example that sometimes because we do offer a dual language program, sometimes, for example, when we have 60 kids in a grade level, it might be as simple as, well, that's three teachers, 20 to 1. However, when you have in a grade level 15 dual language kids, or I'm trying to find an example here like this one, where we have this first grade class that has 27 English kids, even though the dual language kids, classes are smaller, you have to divide that 27 because you cannot have 27 English students in a classroom while the other teachers are teaching dual language. So then you have to divide that class of 27 into two, and that makes the ratio 13 to 1 in one classroom and 14 to another. So in almost every school that you can, that we see, we have two or three grade levels where we actually have to have an extra teacher because of the dual language program. And so that decision to offer dual language also costs us additional teachers. That is not reflected in the TASB study.
Correct. And we also have made the decision to have the teacher to student ratios of 18 to 1 in first grade, so that adds on an additional teacher as well.
Did we keep that, the 18 to 1?
No, I think you mean pre-K. I think you meant pre-K. Did you mean pre-K?
Um, let me see.
I thought we had changed the one, because the first grade, we don't do that, we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, in first grade, we do.
It could be, yes, it's the pre-K.
The pre-K.
Are all the campuses required, let me say this correctly, to do the dual language correctly? Because I understand some were mixed and some are separate. And so as a district, what is the requirement?
We currently have, we are in compliance, Dr. Benavides, when it comes to the instructional arrangement, right? All our bilingual students are with bilingual certified teachers. We do have some students that are in the denial process or in denial, they deny services that are in the English classrooms. But as it is right now, all students are in the dual language program, and we have students in the English program. Now, when it comes to our virtual program, we do have a multi-language schedule, right, for those students. But beyond that, outside of our virtual program, all students are with their dual language teachers or their English teachers at this time.
So my question was, what is the arrangement, the required arrangement from the district?
As it is, when it comes to the instructional placement?
There, and the the arrangement, like, are all the schools required to have them a certain way?
Yes, ma'am. Across the board, we we are in compliance with the state mandate for a dual language program.
Okay, thank you.
So Munoz, you mentioned the virtual program. Can you say more about- Mr. Munoz, you mentioned the virtual program. Can you say more about that? What are we doing now with virtual program? Because that started with COVID. So are we continuing that at what levels and what schools?
Yes, Dr. Somora, we do have a virtual academy as one of the options that we are providing for our community. It is currently stationed at, we have it at Flores Elementary. We have, I think, six teachers currently because of the demand that we have in the community, right? As it is right now, it's not as much as it was last year. A lot of our students have transitioned back to in-person learning. But the few that opted to participate in virtual academy and met the criteria, they are currently receiving virtual instruction.
What's our enrollment?
We currently have, I think, 42 students, and that's something that we're looking at staffing because we do have one teacher per grade level. In some of those grades, where you can imagine 40 kids, we have just four or five. However, those kids need a full-time teacher. And so we are, Student Services is meeting with, talking with parents to try to convince parents to bring their children to on-campus instruction because it is, it is seven teachers that are assigned to the virtual academy right now for that many, for 42 students.
So is there a requirement still from the state that we provide a virtual academy?
It is a district option, whether we choose to provide or not.
So it's our choice?
That is correct. There will be, as it's currently written, there is a sunset clause set for next September in which the state will decide whether they're going to extend it beyond as an offering or not.
What grade levels are being served?
Right now, we have kinder through fifth as an option.
With 42 students?
That is correct.
And seven teachers?
Seven teachers.
I'm not sure if it's six or seven, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we will need to check because there have been some adjustments, Dr. Benavides, depending on the demand that there was.
So how do you see instruction, virtual instruction versus face-to-face for these youngsters?
Based on the data, Dr. Somora, of course, in-person instruction is far more successful. However, because some kids, due to them being immunocompromised, whether they themselves or family members, they have opted to attend virtually, there is a criteria that these students need to meet when it comes to attendance, participation, the assessment program, and then performance. And if they meet the criteria, they're allowed to stay. They do progress monitor every six weeks to see how they're doing. And if the students are not meeting the criteria, we do hold conferences with their parents and we encourage them to transition back to in-person instruction.
Thank you, sir.
You're a sir.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
The next section, option two for the teachers, is consider absorbing up to 94 middle school teacher positions. This is calculated at a 22 to 1 ratio. The state average is 22 to 24. Our core class average is 17 to 1. Elective class average is 15.8 to 1 with an overall class average of 16.4 to 1. So we have 442 middle school teachers. Of these 442 teachers, 257 are core, 142 are electives, and 43 are special education teachers. So this, we are looking, we'll start looking at these matrix for the master schedule for the middle schools. We recently had a resignation at one of our middle schools, and it was a K class that was becoming vacant. So I met with our CTE director, Mr. George Flores, and we looked at the matrix as to how many students were being serviced. And we provided options to the principals, to the principal, which courses could they transition to at the middle school where the students would actually get high school credit. So we had several departments working together to help the campus principal make that transition and making sure that we provided the best services to the students because it was going to be difficult for us to find a teacher in that particular subject area at this time.
I have a question. Do we have any special ed counselors?
We do have special education counselors at the high school.
Do you have an idea about how many we have in each high school?
We do have one.
One each at the comprehensive high schools.
And we don't have any at the elementaries or secondary?
No, we do not.
Will you go back to, just looking at the numbers, just give me a moment?
One of the things that we do need to, we are going to look at at the middle schools is evaluating our electives and, of course, keeping the appropriate number of electives, but also analyzing to see which ones we might not need to offer.
You've shared the elementary and middle school positions. Do you have high school or did I miss it?
No, they did not make any recommendations for the high school in this particular report.
Any reason for that?
The reason for that?
I did not speak to them about the reason as to why they didn't give us a report for the high school.
They did study the high school numbers. They just didn't give us an option for alternate staffing for the high schools.
I know in the past, they had looked for us to look at the electives also.
Yes.
But I don't know. I know we have that data in a previous study.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Science, now that we're looking at the, you mentioned electives, I've had several concerns. Just look into this. I know that there's a lot of after-school programs that are being offered, and that's really affecting our coaching staff because people, you're getting paid $50 an hour rather than be in the classroom for a couple of hours and coach. So can we, you know, look into that? Because I think we're having trouble getting coaches to come out and be coaches after school because of all the programs that we're offering. And maybe do a comparison with districts around to see if their stipends actually, because the stipends for the coaches now, it's, you know, they're getting paid $50 an hour for an ACE program or whatever they're doing, and it's taking away from the coaching staff. And that's one of the problems that I've been hearing a lot this past couple of weeks, that they're having trouble finding coaches to come out and, maybe we might want to look at the stipend for coaches and be a little bit more appealing. And, you know, we don't have this issue in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor.
Dr. Science, do you think we need to get some information on high schools?
Yes.
Because we've got all the special high schools.
We can look at their master schedules and see how many teachers we have in the core and how many we have in the electives and see what their teacher to student ratio is.
And review the previous study and what recommendations they had made for high school, because they did make some recommendations for high school. And then we can see how different we are from that time.
Even in this, even in this study, and I'm trying to find the, I mean, they did evaluate our high schools. They just did not present it as an option. But there is information in this study on our high schools. And so we will gladly look at it and see what adjustments we might make based on that.
We had been saying before that when we look at teacher pupil ratios, that we're pretty well balanced because we have formulas. In this report, it is showing, the word that TASB is using, absorbing.
Yes.
Teachers. I don't know what that means, reducing teachers.
Yes, reducing teachers.
Right? You're just trying to use a different word. But it does say elementary 162 and middle school 94.
Yes.
And I just think we really need to take a look at it and see if that is so. Because as you were explaining, you've already given some reasons for those numbers being the way they are, in elementary at least, right? But I'm sure there's reasons for that also in middle schools and high schools.
And I was thinking, as Mr. Cantor was speaking, that one of the things that has really impacted the coaching situation, well, in a negative way for them, has been the ACE program because the ACE program pays very good money and they are getting a stipend. And their stipend is being divided into, I don't know how many days. And so therefore, that has been, you know, we've created our own problem. And then there's the talk among teachers, coaches, our teachers. And so they're comparing and they're like, wait a minute, this.
They coach and play games, they get home at 10:00, and it's like, well, the ACE program, we only worked a hour.
Yes.
It makes sense.
It's a concern district-wide because they've shared that.
My other thought on teacher pupil teacher ratios has to do with pre-K 3. So what are ratios now? Because I've been at Head Start with Head Start programs, and, I mean, anytime you get over 11, like you said.
Yes.
It's tough.
It is. We need to make a concerted effort to try to keep it at 11 to 1.
So what's the answer in terms of where are we now?
We are staffing our campuses, and we're going to see a report in section four as to an update on the elementary campuses.
Good. I was going to say, I think you have included, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I will wait.
Just make a note to bring back to us, a study for high school and special ed, in-depth special ed with a pathologist so far.
And I'll do the middle school as well.
Yeah.
In terms, well, you're probably going to get into it next, right, with the different departments? Do you get into the different departments?
Yes. Yes, there was information for custodial and for CNS.
Okay, I'll hold my questions.
Yes. So for the custodial department, to evaluate our current staffing, to determine any needed adjustments, the benchmark is one custodian per 21,000 square foot. The district average is 7.4 positions per 1,000 students. Peer districts average is 5.3. So the district is staffed, although below the APPA recommendation, but above the peer district average. So currently, we have 207 custodians, including head custodians. Based on the TASB recommend formula, for a district our size, we should have 178 if we use the formula that they're saying of 7.4 as to what we've had consistent back when they did that report. There is a note on there that La Juve ISD has staffed 18 positions below the APPA standards. Some districts establish a staffing ratio greater than the recommended standards. The district is staffed above the peer district staffing comparison. So the district should evaluate its current custodial effectiveness to determine if an adjustment should be made to its staffing level. So not all of our classrooms are being utilized at some of the elementary campuses. So they are making those adjustments as to where we need our custodians on there. So our custodial department is doing that. And the next department is child nutrition services. For this option, they give us consider adopting the proposed staffing model. So this one, they calculated based on the meals per labor hour. So our child nutrition services director provided information to TASB in regards to how many meals they prepared on a daily basis at the different campuses. So the secondary campuses all have an efficiency average of above 70%. The elementary campuses range from 37 to 77%. So the proposal is that we reduce our CNS department by 24 positions on there. So we currently have 242 cafeteria, cook, bakers, cafeteria helpers, and cafeteria managers. So it doesn't include any of the office staff or administrators in the CNS department.
Wow, I totally disagree.
I'll ask a question just for budget purposes. So in this case, we fund the child nutrition services from the cafeteria fund, CNS fund. So how are we doing there? Do we have the funds to provide for all these positions that we have?
Good afternoon, board members. We have a healthy fund balance in the child nutrition department. If that's the answer you're looking for.
Yeah, I wanted to hear that because, I mean, we have here 24 people, but yet we know that it may be needed. So I just want to make sure we have the funds.
Questions? So that was the last of the staffing options. And again, they were just options and recommendations that they provided to us.
So you presented custodials. One area that we might want to look at is transportation. Do we have any in transportation?
In this study, they did not address transportation, but we'll look at previous reports and check to see what, at least what the benchmarks are.
Right.
So that we can make adjustments.
I believe for this past year, we left 225 positions available in our transportation department. I think we're around 200. I didn't get an exact number of how many of them are actually filled. So we are working with Mr. Gonzalez because we do have a turnover rate there in transportation. And so we do have recommendations coming in at the next board meeting for bus drivers.
What are we paying hourly rate for the bus drivers?
I believe we increased it to, I want to say 1650 an hour. That is the fastest-growing market for our bus drivers. On that one, a couple of years ago, TASB removed it from the regular compensation plan and put it on a scale on its own because it was driving all the other positions a little bit higher. So they pulled that one aside, and we have a salary scale just for our bus drivers. And so they're not embedded, they were not embedded within the auxiliary department.
How about our maintenance department?
I don't have those off the top of my head. As far as the salaries?
No, no, not the salaries, just where we are with staffing, since you looked at CNS and we looked at custodial.
So in looking at the allocations from last year, we did make some adjustments on there because from the previous report, we were overstaffed with plumbers, painters, carpenters. So we have been keeping an eye on those as there's resignations and retirements. And so I know on some of those, we have not filled them to be able to get to the point, I guess, adjust our staffing to where we're supposed to be.
I guess that would be another one that we would ask, a follow-up, yeah, the maintenance department, yeah, to bring it back.
Yeah, I think that part of looking at staffing would require that we look at, like, what work orders have been made in those areas to ensure that, in fact, the numbers are there. Do we have enough people to take care of them now?
Right now, I know that we do have many work orders pending due to the exterior door audits that we're conducting and then also the state fire marshal's consultation. And so we do have quite a few work orders that are pending. And so staffing in that department right now is an issue because of those areas that we need to address.
Yeah, and I get concerned when I hear that we may be overstaffed, but yet we may not be responding to the needs that we have out there. So either we're not getting to them, something's happening.
Something's not right. Something doesn't match.
So we go by, good evening. And Mr. Rodriguez was on point, but just an overall, we've cut about, in the last three years, we've cut over nine groundskeepers. We've cut over, I believe it's over nine maintenance, whether it's electricians, painters, carpenters, plumbers, journeymen. So it's been about close, through attrition and, yeah, just closing the positions in general, right, over the last two years. And something, yeah, it gives. We didn't know that we were going to have the fire marshal inspection. We didn't know we were going to have, you know, what happened over in our, in Del Rio area, Uvalde. And so Dr. Science is right. In the last three months, we have a total of over 1,200 work orders to meet the needs of the safety of our students and staff. But we have been, we met today, in fact, on addressing how we can best do with our budget and our staff to best meet the budget and our staff to best meet the needs. So we'll have some more answers for the questions in the next one.
Yeah, because it's not fair that things are not being taken care of at the campus, you know, they need to be because it affects the whole teaching and learning environment.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And aside from this also, any, but anytime that we have staff members that are absent out on FMLA discretionary leave or out for any particular reason, then we're not fully staffed in the departments or at the campuses whenever those situations occur. So the next section in your binder, Section 3, were strategies to address staff with salaries above pay range. So there's two different type of administrator contracts. There's the Chapter 21 contracts and those individuals, the positions require for them to have an ESPEC certificate, and so they're protected under Chapter 21 contract laws. So for Chapter 21 staff members, we have to give them 45-day notice before the start of the year if their salary is going to be adjusted, if it's going to be going down on there. So they do not recommend that we do any, make any adjustments during mid-year because the contract has already started. For non-Chapter 21 positions, it is not required, but they are recommending that we would give the individuals notice so that way they could have an opportunity either to look elsewhere, but that, TASB does not recommend reducing pay for employees unless they, they themselves are requesting to move to a lower-paying position. So that's one of the strategies on there. The next recommendation is to freeze pay of employees that are paid above the range maximum. And so it's not necessarily the midpoint of the position. The midpoint of the position is the market value of the position. So for each category, we have a minimum, mid, and max. So there's individuals that because of their longevity have maxed out on those positions and so they're getting paid above the maximum of the pay range for these positions. So their recommendations is to not provide an increase should the board consider an increase for the 23, 24 school year, give half of the pay increase percentage, or give the pay increase as a one-time payment. So those are a couple of strategies that they do recommend. And so just to give you an idea as to how many staff members we're talking about, we have 13 under administrative education and these are the Chapter 21 contracts on there. We have 13 staff members that are above the pay range maximum for the position. Under administrative management, we have four employees that are above the maximum for the position. Under administrative support, so these would be our clerical positions, we have 12 employees above the maximum of the position. Under instructional support, we have 31. And the biggest group that we have above the pay range maximum is our auxiliary staff at 130 staff members.
What does include?
The auxiliary staff members would include bus drivers, CNS, operations, staff members that are not at the campus.
We, do we have that? Because we used to have it.
Excuse me?
Do we have this? Because we used to have it in the TASB study in the past.
In the TASB study, this one was in the pay maintenance study that was brought to you all at one of the work sessions. So these numbers were included there when we were looking at the potential raises.
We can bring those back. We just gave you a summary of those positions, but it is in the compensation point of.
Yes, it was in, it was in one of the work session binders.
I remember that, where it shows the little dots and it shows the ones that are out of the range.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we can have those.
Did I forget?
Yeah, we can get by, yes. One of the things that we're just trying to do is to push forward the idea of just being fair to all the staff and to make sure that, you know, people are being compensated correctly. And if they're not, then that we address the issue of fairness across the board.
Right. So these are, in the positions that they're in, they're being paid above the maximum.
I know, I know. But that's the reason why it's important that we look at them.
So, and I would add to what Dr. Benavisi is saying, to extend upon what fairness means, and fairness would not only mean, I would say, looking at these positions, but those that may not be at the levels that they probably should be.
Should be, correct.
So that it works both ways. There are some people that may not be at the salary level that they should be and others that may be, as you have pointed out.
So there is a scatter.
From a standpoint of fairness, it's across the board.
There is, in that budget work session document, there are scatter plots where it shows that on some of the positions, we do have pay compression. And so we can see that everyone is closely around the midpoint of the position, but in others, we do have a range from at the low to the high.
Yeah, the other point that sometimes, or thing that sometimes happens is that people feel like they would be better off leaving the district and then reapplying because then they get a higher increase than if they are moving from positions within the district, just because of the way that, I guess, calculations are made. When determining what percent, what percentage of increases they can get as they move from one level to another.
Correct. When we do the salary increases, we look at the salaries of other individuals with similar years of experience on there because most definitely, we do not want to compensate someone at a higher amount if they have less years of experience than someone that's already in that position. So we do have what we call control rates.
And since we're on fairness, just, I would like to look at the salary schedule because as we were seeing it the last time, there's very little difference between the beginning salary and then first year, second year, third year, to where.
For the teachers, yes.
Some teachers have been here five years, eight years, and the difference between zero years' experience and eight years' experience is minimal.
Correct. From one year to the next, it might be 250, 500, and then at others, we do see a little bit more than the ones at the minimum.
So I think that we've got to take a look at that because we're looking at what our starting salary, but we've got to take a look at the rest also.
Is there a reason why we don't have that posted in the website? Just because when I go through different districts, they have the pay scale posted and I haven't been able to find it on our website.
We have not had that one posted on the website for quite a few years.
Is there a reason why? Just because other districts do it?
Yes.
I don't know why we wouldn't.
I think in the, in the name of transparency, it's important that we post it so that people are well aware. I know we were very proud to have increased our beginning teacher salary to 55,000 and then Edinburgh came and gave 57, I believe. So, so I think that, I mean, it is good. It keeps the districts competitive and it is good to post it and we're being transparent.
Okay. Most definitely, we'll work on that tomorrow.
Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome. And the last section is Section 4, update on the teacher staffing at elementary. So since day one, like I said, we have been monitoring our enrollment counts. From day one to today, we have had to increase in 25 classrooms. It is a good problem for us to have that we're having parents trust us and they're bringing and enrolling their kids with us. We've had to increase in our kinder classrooms by six teachers. We did have, do have a plan to where if we cannot find the certified teachers, that we do have the enrichment enhancement teacher that was previously known as GT to be able to cover some of those positions that we're having to increase by. And right now, we have seven elementary enrichment enhancement teachers that have taken on a regular classroom assignment. For the reading teachers, we have five that have been assigned to the regular classrooms. And then based on today's enrollment counts, as we were seeing our teacher to, to student ratio, we're needing to increase an additional 13 teachers. So we are daily checking our website to see if we have any certified applicants. Most definitely, we pick up those bilingual teachers. We send them out to the campuses for the principals to interview and we're bringing them on board as soon as possible. You all are getting that information next year, I'm sorry, next week at the board meeting because as soon as they clear the background check, they have their fingerprints, we're able to start them off with us so that way they can get to the classroom as soon as possible on there. So we are working on filling these vacancies as soon as we can.
Is there still, I'm sorry, is there still a delay on the fingerprinting? Because I know sometimes, like, we want more urgency, but on the other end, it's not so much the district, but.
Right. I mean, so it all depends, like, our internal affairs department does those uploads after a board meeting and so the candidates get an email alert with a schedule. So if they move on that quickly, they can go get their fingerprints. Usually, we see a backup during, during the summer, the summertime, because everyone's trying to get those fingerprint appointments. But right now, we haven't had anyone tell us that they're having difficulty with getting the appointments.
So we should, with the teachers that we have though, we should be able to get those 13 teachers?
Correct, yes.
But I really think that we ought to look at the whole 25 because I think that when we're taking teachers away from their current assignments, it's just, reduces the importance of those other programs and really the attention that is needed in those programs. We already have parents that are concerned that in some of our forming arts campuses or STEM campuses.
Correct.
That we are using those teachers for other purposes and yet they moved to those, their children to those campuses for that purpose and then the teachers are not there.
Correct.
So I just don't see how, you know, how it is that we could just say, we just need 13. I think we need 25. Because these other teachers, they need to get back to what they're supposed to be doing. And I think that that may be happening in more than just one place.
And I know I also had, I had requested a study on pre-degree program and the cost effect. I mean, I don't know where we get that.
It's on the agenda for the, for August 31st board meeting. Because we needed to see which other kids came back.
The fact that we're getting enrollment up, are we getting funded for?
Yes.
Because we have.
We have that, we have that study to present on August 31st because you did request it, but we needed to see how many kids were returning because I think that was part of the question.
One of the questions that I had.
How many of last year's pre-K3 kids enrolled in pre-K4?
And in that study, be sure to include all the neighbor, all the districts that do have a three-year-old program because I know it's helped a lot of districts also.
Will do. And we do have that discussion item, Dr. Science. And in regards to the enrollment, it is increasing every single day. As of today, it was at 24,225. So, but I know that HR is working diligently trying to get those classrooms staffed.
Do we have any initiatives with universities or techs, or colleges here to get some pre-K teachers, pre-K3?
Well, we do host the clinical teachers, so we do have some student teachers that are assigned to us. They will be starting with us next week on Monday under the supervision of a certified teacher. So we'd like to start working with the principals after they've been with us for a month and see, I mean, could these potentially help us fill some of our vacancies that could come up in the second semester on there? So we do reach out to UTRGV, Texas A&amp;M Kingsville, our alternative certification programs. We keep up to date with them. As soon as they send us lists, our staff members are reaching out to the candidates, especially if we have a vacancy with a certificate that matches of what they have.
It would be good to look into studying the way we did it in the past where we got a lot of instructional assistants that wanted to be teachers and, and then they start their training program and then we get them certified. That's something to keep, you know, keep our staff here locally because they're, usually the instructional assistants are local people. So that might be something to look at and recruit a cohort of 25 and get them going.
Most definitely.
I have a couple of questions. On the pre-K3 teachers, is there a way, they have to be fully certified to be the?
They have, they have to have the early childhood certification.
And then my second question is, is there a way we can get, going back to the coaching, paraprofessionals to do after-school coaching? Whatever program it is after-school, does it have to be also a teacher-certified teacher?
For the, for the ACE programs?
No, no, no. For a football coach, be a paraprofessional, get that stipend.
I mean, we can look into that. I know we don't do that, but doesn't mean we cannot look into it.
Because with a shortage, it would be great if we can give paraprofessionals opportunity to help. There's a lot of good people out there that can help us.
We just need to make sure that we're not in violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act. If it's a P instructional assistant and then they're coaching after-school, it could potentially be an extension of their duties during the day and we would have to pay them at time and a half. So I know that we're very cautious of that.
Or at least just look into it to see if it can be done, if you understand.
We'll look into it, Mr. Cantone. Thank you.
So that concludes the information that I have for you. Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Based on everything that you've presented and what you know about our district and our staff, our needs financially, do you think that our district is in a financial state where we could afford a $2,500 bonus, stipend, retention, whatever, for teachers in an additional one than what we've approved?
I would defer that question to Mr. Garza. We look at hiring the teachers and giving them the salary, but as far as the overall budget, that might be something out of my area.
Well, let me just say that even if monies would be there, and there are, that that is not something that the district can do in terms of providing any types of bonuses. I can refer that to our attorney, but that is, that is already, when we know. Once the contract starts and people are being paid for the work that they're doing, then that's it. As there's been provisions, neither the contract or the budget made, where those adjustments could be made later on, that is not possible. And I've put the pencil to it and it costs a lot of money. You want to know some numbers, I'll share them. Go ahead, sir.
Well, this year, we have a very tight budget as we are aware. It would have to be something to look at in the future, of course, based on our current, well, our enrollment looks really good this year. It started off very well. And if we can keep that pace and it be increasing, we can see what we can do for next year as long as our ADA increases, it might be a positive outlook for us for next year.
But it would be something that would be included in next year's budget?
Correct.
If we look at the 2,500 and we have, if we would include all of the staff, I think, that would cost us over $10 million.
Yeah.
And so then I said, well, if 61, if we get $6,106 per student, we would have to have an increase in enrollment of 880 students, no, 1,691 students. That's ADA. And if we say we don't get the ADA, the only other source would be increasing taxes.
Correct.
So one penny of taxes gets us $285,000, which would generate the 10 million, but that would cost us about another 36 cents in taxes and I don't think we can increase our taxes any more than where they are.
Correct. That is correct.
I'm saying that just because sometimes we get these feelings that, hey, we're going to get more money. So you can either combine increasing enrollment, increasing taxes, or you go to the fund balance, which has been decreasing each year.
And it's going to continue to decrease once we don't have the ESER monies and those 26 million that are funding staff right now. And so in a couple of years, that's gone. And so if we don't do anything about staffing, then it's going to have to come from the fund balance.
Correct. That is correct.
And my opinion is anything's possible if we put our minds to it. I just feel that our staff deserve everything we can offer them. I mean, I think happy teachers are happy, happy teachers are what we need in our district and I think that anything is possible. I mean, I think our ESER funds would be, no matter, we'd have to spend them in a matter of three years or something like that. I think we can make adjustments to maybe some special projects and maybe I do go that route. I just think anything's possible if we all set our minds to it and. And, I mean, I agree with some of the stuff you've said, but, you know, we're seven people, six people here, we all have different minds. I think if we can give our staff and our employees what they deserve, I think it'd be a better.
I don't think that I would disagree that our staff deserves it. I wouldn't disagree with it at all. I'm just pointing out the realities of what is possible legal and what is possible funding wise, while as our legal counsel to advise.
I'm sorry, what was the specific question?
If we are able to provide bonuses in the middle of the year.
So we're not able to provide bonuses in the context of a bonus, no. But I do want to caution the board, I want to limit this discussion. You don't have an item on the agenda to discuss budget or raises or anything like that, so I want to keep, I want to limit it to what's on the agenda for right now.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. It's understaffing, so thank you.
Thank you for everything, Gloria. You're always so informative and you know your numbers. Thank you for always doing a great job.
You're welcome.
I just wanted for the record to record that Dr. Cantu had to leave at six fifty-three, so just for Blanca. And if there is no other questions, then we're going to need a motion for adjournment.
I will want to make a comment. I know that we've said a lot, and they use the word absorb, and absorption may cause some anxieties, but I just want to assure everyone who may be listening, our staff and others, that we will be fair and take, you know, a very close look at what needs to be done and do it in a fair manner. And that we will work towards making sure that we live within our means and understand that we do care and that we want to be fair with everybody. Thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cantu to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Hernandez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-three.